Today we're gonna go ahead and call this work session to order and try to get started. And got a couple of real important things to talk about today. And these are employee benefits. And these are benefits that's kinda gonna happen with them at the end of the trail when their work careers are over. We have our accounting firm here today to brief us on this. And there's kind of a deadline and urgency for us to hear this because we gotta act on it fairly soon, if, as I understand it from Angela, if we get this handled under this current deadline. Also, we have our principals from our schools, elementary, middle, and high school from Hamilton today, here to talk about the monies that the city has been gifting them and a little update and report as to how it helps them and this kind of thing. Gentlemen, if you'll bear with us, we wanna, we wanna talk about this tier one, tier two employee benefit, and then we wanna hear from you guys. I hate to delay your schedules, but we wanna get this accounting firm to give us a full briefing on this. I'll just mention this, we still have the COVID with us in our community. Couple of our officers, maybe three, are being affected as we speak by symptoms or confirmations of COVID being with them. And we wish we weren't reporting that today, but it's really the facts and we'll have to remember. At our next meeting, we've got to make a change in our meeting date for the first meeting in September. We're gonna be dealing with Labor Day weekend falling as a Monday holiday. First Monday will be there, and we'll need to adjust either for the following Monday or maybe move the meeting to Tuesday night, depending on what works for you guys best. You'll let me know your wishes between now and then. We'll try to put that on the agenda and get it corrected. Angela, I'm gonna let you talk just a little bit about what you kinda discussed with me about the urgency of this, and then we're gonna let Alan and Brenda address this as to the, how we would benefit by making some moves within our city government.
I think it was the urgency part, in other words, why we're needing to do this now is because it were going to affect October of this year. Am I right, Brenda and Alan? If we don't do it now, we have to wait until the next, or as far as budgeting, we could probably start it at any time, but we need to have it in the budget. We need to start in the new fiscal year, which would be October. And was it 2013 that they started this, split everybody up between the tier one? Anybody that was hired before that time was considered a tier one, which means you had a few extra benefits that people hired after that date don't have. I think you require them to work longer.
You can't, it's, right now on tier one, you can just work 25 years and then retire, but on tier two, you have to work to age 62. But you can't just work 25 years. So all the newer, younger ones, if they come in at 20, whatever, they've got to stay until they're 62.
Forty-two years of service.
Before they retire. And then there's some others. They, you can't convert your sick on tier two. Tier one can convert your sick time to the time of work. And then the police officers and the firefighters, for every five years they work, they get an extra year on their retirement. And tier one, tier two doesn't give that. I'm sure Brenda and Alan may know some more things about the Navy ones that I know.
Brenda and Alan, I guess some of the questions we'd have, we'll let you talk, and then we'll probably wanna see what other cities around us have been doing, handling this, and maybe the benefits of all of our employees being one or the other. And we'll talk about the cost of the city and that kind of thing. So if y'all can kinda point out a few things and thoughts for us today, we'd appreciate it. You go first.
I understand, once you make this change, that it is forever. It's, you're gonna be on the tier one system. The county just went through the change. I don't know if you read the paper last week, but they, they just made the change.
We thought some agencies were.
I read through their newspaper article, I didn't attend their meeting. And one of the things they talked about, that why they wanted to do it, was because if other counties did it, and they're want to law enforcement or whatever people they hire, they're gonna lose them to some of these other places they fear. Because of the, it is a little better retirement benefits under, under this system than putting everybody under the tier one system. And that was the reason the county did.
Is there any real explanation as to why there's two different tiers now? How did that come to be?
The Alabama Legislature did that. And they did it back in, I don't remember the exact date they passed it, but it started for people that's hired in 2013. After that, we're under the new tier two system.
Are we headed to a mistake there, or are we saying that was a mistake and we wanna get back? Or what are we saying here?
The state passed it, I think, to save money for the retirement system, for the state system, because the tier two, there's more money withheld for the, out of the employee. Then some issues came up. They were lobbied, of course, by the ARISA, the Alabama Retired State Employees Association. And they pointed out that, well, what you're gonna do is, you need to give cities, counties the choice of whether they want to bring them back under, all their employees under the same retirement system. The legislature agreed with that and decided, okay, we've made this decision, but we're gonna let municipalities and counties and other people that's covered by our system that are funding it. It's funded through employer contributions that's taken out of their check and then the city, county, or whatever system matches that. Says, since their funding system, we'll let them make their mind up if they wanna bring everybody, keep everybody under the same system. And so that's when they allowed this and sent out this language, that they sent you a sample resolution, and you have to file this resolution worded in a certain way. And once you do, then everybody is under the old tier one system as far as benefits are concerned, bringing everybody under that, the same retirement benefits, as Andy mentioned, the years of service. I think sick pay is another difference. There's several differences in.
And that amount they'll actually draw when they retire is a pretty good big difference also. So like, if someone retires now under tier one, their amount, for like, say if they make $35,000 for 25 years, I mean, it was, say, $1,500 a month. Well, on a tier two, it might be $1,200. It was like, probably $300, $400 less on the tier two. So I mean, it's a big benefit for our younger employees, and so, I mean, for them to stay if they're either tier one or tier two.
And tier two pays more than tier one people.
Yes, like, there, it's gonna go up. They're gonna have to contribute a little bit more towards their.
But even now, they pay more.
Right, yeah, even now they pay more.
People that are just regular employees pay five.
Right, right, yes. They pay six.
Employees pay six under the tier one. Under the tier two, it's regular employees pay six, and employees pay seven. When, like, those days, the police, I mean, the tier two people, it's gonna go up.
A little bit, to seven and a half, I think.
Seven and a half and eight and a half.
But at the end of the day, the benefits, I think, that they're gonna actually get, because, like I said, you know, they're gonna have to work way more than 25 years. So if they just come in at 21, I mean, they're gonna have to work 40 years to be able to retire, with benefit. I mean, that's the way I understood it. Is that right, Brenda?
Then, when we decided if we wanted to look at this, then we, ARISA, the Alabama Retired State Employees Association, figured how much it would cost us to go to the new system. Then we put it, sent it to our people that do our, in our article report, they, they do that past the 68 adjustment every year to show our funded and unfunded pension lobbies. We sent it to them, and they got the exact same figure. So we had, we had a check to buy our, our people too, and they come up with the same, that it would cost the city $22,821 annually to, to change, to put everybody under the same retirement system, tier one benefit system. The way that would work is, and it's in your resolution if you decided to pass it, your tier two people, the amount that was taken out of their checks would go up. They would pay a somewhat larger amount out of their checks. Your tier one people who are already in the system, in tier one, that is hired before 2013. They would, would, you can choose, what the county did was if their tier one people would not affect them at all, they would keep the same amount coming out of their checks. And if you do that, you have to submit a plan of what you would do if, if you needed more money for your system. And they, that's, when you, when you send in the paperwork, that plan is a simple check the box plan, and the county chose not to, for instance, charge their tier one people any more money. The reason being is, it's my understanding, that the tier one people who are already in the system, their, their tax retirement benefits would not increase any, they're staying on the same tier, in other words, the same plan. So unless the city couldn't pay it, they would not pay anymore since their retirement benefits are already grandfathered under the tier one system.
If, if this council were to vote to put everybody in the same tier, should we poll our employees and say, do you want to be in tier two, or do you want to be in tier one? Or we would just have to arbitrarily do that without their consideration? And why would they not wanna be in tier one?
Yeah, two, and tier two, and tier one. You, y'all make the decision of what it is, though, but you can probably decide about the seven and a half, but it'll be only to the tier two.
Yeah, once you make the decision, you've made the decision.
They can't, yeah, you make the decision. There's no, you know, once you make that decision of how it's gonna be, that's how it is. They don't get to choose, I'm gonna be tier two under the old plan, you know?
So, so the cost is to the ones moving from their current tier, and the city also, Andy's up some to put them in the other tier.
That's right.
Both parties put money in. The ones in tier one don't do anything.
You can choose to have the tier one to pay too, but since their benefits are not gonna increase, most, all the ones that I've seen change at cities and towns have not made the tier one change at all with what's coming out of their checks, because their retirement benefits are already grandfathered into the tier one system. It'll just be your tier, your new employees will have more cut out of their check, but they'll have greater retirement benefits also.
Is that tier two you're speaking of, that?
Yes, the people hired at.
To be, and you.
In other words, what you're saying is gonna be the new employees that'll be on tier two?
Yes.
And your older ones are gonna stay at tier one?
That's right.
And they'll both now be under the same system.
Right.
But your tier two people will pay a little more, tier one won't.
They can choose which way they wanna go, the new employees?
They cannot. Once you decide, all your employees that you have now.
Yes.
And in the future, will be under this system. It's just anybody hired after 2013 is gonna pay a little more out of their check than your older employees.
Now, which ones, that tier one or tier two?
The tier one or your old employees that were hired before 2013.
But the tier two?
Is everybody at?
Now, yeah, starting now.
Right.
Well, they don't have any choice.
They don't have any choice.
Well, what do we got to vote on?
It will cost the city $22,000 a year.
For each employee?
No, no.
For all the, that's per year for all the employees.
It costs us that much more?
Yes.
Gene, this was for everybody that was hired after 2013, not new hires now. It was 2013 on, or considered tier twos.
You already have some tier two people on paper, anybody hired after.
But it costs us $22,000 every year.
Well, it will, if you decide to give them the same benefits as your grand, older employees. I don't know, Angela, if anybody's asked all the employees, do you know?
I know they're very interested in it, there won't be this to happen.
So it's your opinion, they want it to happen.
I would think so. I don't know why they're with you.
I agree with you.
But it's only gonna cost the city $22,000?
That's all.
Per year?
Per year, yeah.
More than what it's, you pay at now.
What you pay at now, yeah.
That's inhibition to what you're paying. How much is that? How many employees we got? A lot of that.
Sixty-six total, but that's, yeah, that would be.
That's not very much for each employee, that is.
How much is that for each employee?
Just, I don't know. And, you know, probably just to take the point, have about, I mean, there's probably eighty-something altogether, counting all your part-time people, but now Brenda still has to report their contributions or report them, they're in the system on a new way they've set up retirement.
We probably have, what, like, 25 or 30 that are tier two, maybe? I'm not, I didn't count them all.
I didn't count them all.
I'm not sure, but we probably have 20 or 30 at least out of that 66 that are on tier two, that would get benefit to go into tier one.
That, that, you're talking about that $22,000. I don't, will it always stand that way? If we have less employees, will that go down? If we have more employees, will that go up? That's an estimated cost. I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of variables in there, but it would cause it as.
It has. They assume their estimate, Gene, based on, I think, our 2018 paper. They did that estimate. So if we have a lot less employees, it'll be less. If we have more in the future, it'll be pro rata more.
Well, we're pretty sure, under the circumstances and looking at the future now, that it'll be more. And I know the employees hope so, and I guess everybody in town will hope so, 'cause everything's gonna go up, it's not going down.
I think some of our other close towns, though, cities have already changed. I mean, Winfield's already changed, Gwin, Hable, I think, changed.
Gwin, yeah.
Gwin, yeah, I think Hable.
They're talking, all of them are bringing it up in their meetings right now, so they can decide what they're gonna do. But when they're, all of, if they do, they'll start October first, 'cause that's really when the, the retirement system wants it to happen.
I think you had your vote on at this last meeting, when I was there.
Yes, I did. I go there too. She told me they had voted in.
Any other questions, Brenda and Alan, today about the tier one, tier two, and the benefits or changes in the cost of the city? I believe we said 20, around $22,000 a year. So that's not a real significant amount of change if you see what it does for your employees. Any questions, Wade, Tony, anything I want?
I mean, I'm the owner of the target system, so I understand, and there'd be a lot of these people, if it's not changed, where they'll forget to draw their coffee for so many years, you know, it takes a long time. And then with another thing too, we're likely to lose good employees, you know, if they wanna go somewhere where they got a better retirement, they're gonna go.
Those are all considerations, ladies. I just wanted us to have a discussion on it today and kinda see how it would benefit our people if we adopt this, put them all in the same plane socially.
Because I would like for it to be on the agenda for Monday night, if that's possible. I think it would be a good time frame for it.
It seems to catch a lot of positive vibes. I'm not against it being on the Monday night agenda, if this council can see fit to.
I don't see any reason why it shouldn't be on there. That's, that's not gonna be much money for each employee, and it'd be better for them and not get better dealt than my poor partner.
Let's, let's try to have it on there. Any other words of wisdom you guys don't wanna pass on to us?
That's all I got, Karen. And then we just go up on gas at $0.20 a gallon, can't we? Bring that over, Nick. I don't like that.
I appreciate our accountants and the job y'all do for us and the guidance you give us, because sometimes we can get bogged down in technicalities and y'all can unravel it for us. You can start coming, instead of Brenda coming every time to make all these adjustments on our computer. But we'll let you come over and fix our programs.
We'd be in trouble that night.
Brenda, we appreciate you. She does so much for us and others in the community. But y'all got anything else you wanna add about tier one and tier two?
I don't. I just, I really think it'd be a good thing.
Yeah, I do too. I think, I think you do.
All right. Y'all have a lot of stuff, and we're gonna move on to the next item in the.
Appreciate it.
Today's workshop. Two years ago, we, of course, made an agreement with the schools to assess for the money given each year for two years in a row, and that was our alcohol tax. We were given 30% from the get-go on alcohol tax, but we increased it to a set amount of around $135,000, with some going to the teachers and other, the other money, of course, that comes just directly to principals, primarily for in-class improvements and Each year, we like to hear from you guys, kinda let us know how this money does benefit you and some of the things that you've expended for, and so. Norman, since you're a tender school man, we're gonna let you go first.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll let the, the new principals kinda, well, not, we're kinda in progression here.
Thanks, sir.
We're, we're gonna let Norman take the floor first. We appreciate you men coming today very much.
I know, thank you. So first of all, is there any questions off the top of your head before I give my last fill?
We need you give your teachers their share of the money.
Just as soon as school starts. And the way that works, and each school's set up a little different, my teachers do not have a, a personal account at the school. They have like a fifth grade account, sixth, seventh, and eighth. Anytime they need anything, they call me and I give it over. Usually, it's ink, paper, I mean, I can name you a million things, you're not gonna know what it is, because it's, you know, it's stuff pertaining to what they're doing in class. So, you know, sometimes they spend it all, sometimes they don't, but if they don't, this next teacher will use it, 'cause your needs are different from year to year. And so, the thing, they spend it on various from time to time. The state allows, and this varies from year to year, also $700 a year for classroom expenditures, so the teachers have that, plus the money that is set aside for them, plus the money that's given to us, we spend, you know, any extra that they need. $200 sounds like a lot, but it's not. It doesn't go very far. Ink is $100 a bob for printing, so if they're printing a lot, they could run three, four or five partridges a year, and so that's just $400 in ink. So, like I said, the money, it's great, but it doesn't last, and y'all know that, I mean, y'all in the city, so y'all know how quickly the money is spent. But just a few things that I bought this year, and most of the stuff I don't, when I buy something big, I have a committee that I go to, and we talk about the benefits for school and what it can help. And, you know, this year and this coming school year, it's something totally different. It's a, it's a new beast, and we don't know how it's gonna work or what's gonna happen. The last nine weeks at school was not as smooth as we wanted. When the kids left us, we had a plan, and the plan seemed like it would work, and it really didn't work. And so we're starting a new school year with a different plan, hoping that it's gonna work. But saying all that, $4,500 of mine went towards Renaissance, and that's called Accelerated Reader. That's where the kids read and take tests, it's a computer program. Follett is another company we buy books from, it's from the library, we spent $2,300 in there on library books. Quill, I have a dozen Quill POs where the teachers spend their $200 on various classroom things. Also, let's see, one of the big things that I, oh, Scholastic is a, a monthly subscription that the teachers get little booklets, and the kids can read up-to-date events and stuff. Spent $5,000 on that. Spent five thousand on that. And, um, my big purchase this year, and, um, I talked to, mentioned it to Tammy and mentioned it to, uh, uh, the mayor, and this is the one I had trouble with, that I got the ordinance, read the ordinance, got one by committee, and, uh, we decided to purchase a, purchase a digital sign this year for the school, uh, at the cost of nineteen thousand dollars. Using that money, uh, for that sign. And the reason, when I look at this ordinance, it says, um, the money can be used for, uh, classroom educational, in- instructional materials, equipment, supplies, equipment necessary for classroom education and/or extensions of classroom coursework and to provide educational experiences for students. Well, this is a different year for us. And having a sign to relay messages, to get information to, to, um, I could put homework assignments up on that board if students don't know. If we have a special schedule, I could say, kids come to school this day. If we're in school, pictures of this day, this is what for lunch. So, in my opinion, and my committee's opinion, or every teacher that you talk to, a sign is something that's needed for our school. And the money that you guys gave us, and when we read this, we interpreted that, that it would be okay to buy that sign. Uh, some people's not for that, a- and, and I get that, and, um, but that comes back to me since I, you know, made the, the last decision. But in my opinion, this is something that's much needed because of what's going on in the schools today. And so...
I like it. We did talk about it and I told you that, you know, I could not give you the money to do that. So let, let's just give it to you.
Yeah, no, no. Debbie told me to, to talk with Scott and instead of talking to Scott, I just got the ordinance myself. And so by no means did she, she did not say, no, you can't do it, no, you can't do it. She said, referred it to someone else, so...
But we did talk about the, uh, the grant one, the grant, the arts grant or whatever. And that would have been completely acceptable, no questions asked.
Right, right.
Okay, so let's just, okay, now move on.
And, and, and that is where I'm at right now. Um, that's a total of thirty-four thousand dollars spent. I haven't spent the rest of it because I'm unsure of what's gonna happen. And so depending on what my teachers need or what, if, if, if we don't get the money again, you know, I'd like to have a little cushion for this school year, the upcoming school year to, to do something with. As far as the, uh, she talked about the grant, we, uh, each school got a, our five arts grant this year. We're actually, it's been two years. And this is the second year of the grant. The grant's forty thousand dollars. The first year was forty thousand paid for, paid for by the grant committee. This year, uh, each school has to come up with half of that. So this calendar school year, we've gotta come up with twenty thousand dollars to match their twenty thousand dollars, uh, to fund arts in the school. And so this coming year, with the money hopefully that we get, I'm setting aside twenty thousand dollars to fund the arts program. Um, and, and while I'm up here, just gonna give you my opinion. I've been, uh, doing this for twenty-two years. I was assistant principal for sixteen, uh, fourth year as a principal and, um, some time in the classroom. From year to year, things change. Uh, the state gives us so much money for books, the state gives us so much money for technology, uh, the state gives us so much money for, um, books, technology, library fund, furniture. Furniture, that was the other, and...
And that's the technology, yeah.
And furniture. So each year, they give us so much money. So like this year, I had thirty thousand dollars spent on books. Well, books are a hundred dollars a piece, so after I buy thirty, um, it goes pretty quick. So that money is used pretty quick. Technology money, um, I think I had around fifteen to eighteen thousand. I bought all new smart TVs to hang in the room with the teachers, that earned us that money. So the money that the state gives us, you know, we can spend a lot. So when this first came about, we were like, please, we're, we'll take any money that you give us, we'll use it, you know, how you say to use it. But after, you, you can only buy so many books, you can only buy so many computers, you can only buy, um, so many printer cartridges. And then there's the money setting just for what we laid out here. What I wish, or how this would be written, would be, okay, here is the money that you get and when you wanna spend over a three or four thousand dollars, come to this work session, tell us what you wanna spend and we'll all pay for that. And that way it opens it up for, I'm not saying for salaries, um, I'm not saying for coaching supplements, uh, anything like that. But I'm just saying, just for different things that we need in the school. My building was built in nineteen thirty-eight, um, and the state and the county can only give us so much money. I don't know if y'all been in there lately, but there's a lot of updates that it needs. And, and this year, we did get a new bathroom in the girl's side. Um, next year, we're gonna get one in the boy's side. But they, you know, with it being a county school, you know, all the money has to be distributed amongst everybody, so we only get, you know, a portion. But if it was written again, if y'all decided to give us the money again, which we, we needed, um, I wish it was just written, hey, anything, I'm up this amount, come talk to us, and y'all say yes or no, and you say no, so bid and we go back to the drawing board. You know, I, I broke it down. We've got about seventeen hundred kids in this, uh, school system. Uh, the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, so if you break that down, that's about seventy-eight dollars a year that the city of Hamilton spends on kids, or you could break it down to about forty-five cents a day. And when you think about it like that, that's not a whole lot. I mean, uh, most of you went to Hamilton, uh, you have kids, grandkids in Hamilton. So this money is going directly to them every single day in one way or the other. So like I said, you know, back to moving forward, um, I hope that, you know, when this comes up again, that we can decide, hey, let's give these principals a little more leeway. Don't give them, I mean, I know you're not just gonna set us loose with, you know, forty thousand dollars, but just say, hey, they know what they need. They've been in the game long enough. And it's like, you know, if I went to the bank and, and I told Brent Thompson, hey, I'm gonna give you a donation, but I want you to spend it this way. I have no idea how bank works. I don't know what they need and what they want, but he does. So I've gotta trust him if I'm gonna give him that money to spend it how I think it needs to be. But still, there's checks and balances everywhere, in schools and cities. You can't just spend money and, and, and not be, I mean, like I said, there's a paper trail a mile long. So like I said, my hope is for we still get this money, cause it's needed, and that, um, that it's a, it's a little more lenient on what we get to spend it on.
I think you're, I think you're exactly right. You'll end up spending a lot of that money for stuff you don't need because you can't buy what you need for money. I understand what you're saying. And I think the money should be given to you in something you wanna spend that's different from what's in there that you can spend it on. You can bring it back to the council and the council can approve that out of that money.
Right.
And not just have it there where you've gotta spend it on something you don't need. And that's what's happening on some of it, I'm sure.
Right. And I thought of these principles and they feel the same way I did.
Yeah.
Um, not that we won't free range this, by no means. We want it to be checked, we want checks and balances, cause we want, cause we're out of the public. We're, 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 we serve the public. And so, um, we don't wanna hide anything, we don't wanna say, you know, that, we want y'all to approve what we spend, but just like I said, the, the wording of this. And in the beginning, it was, hey, that, that's, that sounds great, that's... But, you know, like right now, every kid has a computer at Hamilton Elementary School, high school, and the middle school. So we don't need anybody who want computers. But in two years or three years, we may need to buy new computers. So like I said, it just, it just changes, uh, from year to year.
I think you should have an option to buy what you need with, with the money. Cause the reason we're letting you have the money, the taxpayers' money, is for the kids. And what you're gonna be needing is gonna be for the kids. And you're buying some stuff probably in the end that's laying there that you need something worse.
Right.
And I think that's the way it should be set up, that you can ask for something that's needed for the kids.
Right.
Will your computers be assigned at the beginning of the year in case they're sent home?
This year, we are gonna assign each kid, uh, a computer. Those, we have five hundred kids going virtual school this year. Uh, didn't expect that. I think the board probably expected a hundred or two hundred, but, um, five hundred kids between the three of us are going, um, well, maybe not five, probably close to four, I've got a little over a hundred.
We, we had applications coming in this afternoon. I mean, it was just like a revolving door, so I, I really couldn't give you an answer.
So three hundred and fifty kids virtual, so if they do not have a device, we loan them a device. And we also have, like, the vice of the school since with the COVID scare, um, in my building, in the district, we're not even changing classes. They're not changing classes over there, elementary school, they're not going to lunch or break, they're in classroom all day long. So, um, my seven eighth graders in high school, they're gonna be changing, so I'm giving them a laptop so they can take it around with them all day, so we don't have to clean every time. And, and, you know, that's another thing too, this is, this is really hurt us financially as a school. You don't think of schools needing money and spending money, but, and, and this likes of public knowledge. Our bills at my school are twenty-five hundred dollars a month, just from, most of it is a land chemical, where you buy toilet paper, paper towels, bleach, whatever you need to clean, it's about eight hundred dollars a month on average. And since school's been out in March, we've had zero dollars coming in. And we had to pay for that out of, uh, break money, uh, fundraisers anyway we can. And, uh, so in the last five months, I'm out about ten grand and I have no money coming in. And so, you know, you would think all this COVID stuff and people getting bailed out and airlines getting bailed out, schools are not getting bailed out. And it's starting to get scary now because I can sustain this for about three more months and I'm gonna be at zero dollars. And not that I'm saying I would use that money to, to get us to the next month, but I might use it to buy toilet paper, you know, you know, if, if that was the case. But I'm hoping, you know, if things change here pretty soon, that's not gonna be the case. But, you know, that's a worry that I have and that's a worry these guys have too, because even if the kids come back, you got half the kids there. We're not trying to make money, but we're just trying to sustain what we have. Uh, we had to pay our phone bill, um, uh, if I ever need anything from S and H, building nineteen thirty-eight, you can make a lot from S and H to keep it going. Uh, pet solutions. I wish you could see the roaches in my building. There's a lot of cats. But, uh, anyway, uh, not telling anybody, just being practical, that's eighty dollars a month. Copy machines, about three hundred a month, uh, like I said, phone bill, three hundred a month. And so that's not even buying snacks, you don't have to buy the snacks to, to, to make the money. But anyway, I'm not telling you, I'm not telling you all my problems of the school, cause Hamilton schools are great. I love it. I know these guys love it. Um, I love going to work every day. Um, I'm really passionate about it. I got two kids there, um, and I wouldn't work any other place. And, and like I said, you've gotta love it because of what you have to put up with sometimes. And it's not the kids' fault, it always goes back to the parents. But like I said, you have to love it. And I love it and I love to take on any kind of, um, problems that we're gonna have this year and what's gonna be new. But that's just the money side of it and, and I saw a lot of people don't care that. I'm sure people might, the state pays their air payment, they don't, you know, they don't take care of it.
I think you should be able to come back during the year and ask about, you bet you're needing something that you don't have the money. And ask the city, since we're giving you this money anyway, I'd rather you get it and spend it on something you need instead of buying something you don't need it. It's lazy, so you're spending the money. And I think you should have that so you can come back during the year and, and ask the council. Cause it might not be us, they might feel the same way that I do or these other people living around. Cause I'd really see you get something you need, it's something you don't need. And I understand what you're talking about, some way in business. I couldn't go and just give money if I was running a business and know what I'm gonna have to spend it for during the year. Things come up that you need it worse. And that's, you're running a business, is what you're running.
Yep, you're right. And I don't think there's anybody that's gonna be against this, um, cause I think everybody has the best interest in mind of the kids. You know, the kids are the future, the, uh, Hamilton High School, Middle School, Elementary School, that, that's Hamilton. I mean, when you think of Hamilton, that's what you think of. And so I don't think anybody, uh, president, council, or the council coming would say, no, we're not gonna give, you know, money. The only problem is, is how it's being spent and how we can be more involved in that spending. So anyway, I took too much time. You have questions for me?
Pretty good explanation, Norman. I really, uh, you know, this council was agreeable and, and myself uh, to, uh, increase the amount that we were, uh, giving to the schools and, uh, it was an honorable request. And I feel like you guys had a really messed up year last year, not getting to have any of your fundraising through the student body and, and things, when the school just shut down and was no more for the, to the end of the year. I know how that could affect your finances and I think, you know, it's where people like us can come in and help and, and scotch for you a little bit. We, we just don't have money to throw away.
All right.
We feel like it's all been used for good causes and this is why we kinda need to hear from you guys.
Oh, definitely, yeah. And like I said, I, I'll come every month and talk about what's going on at the school and give you updates. I'll, I'll be glad to, um, you guys can drop by.
This was done in lieu of, uh, the possibility of bringing to, uh, the, the community a referendum to raise taxes and we did, we wanted to do what we could do as a city before we had to face any changes of the tax base, uh, coming from our people that live here. So we gifted this money and, you know, I'm okay with that. I mean, I, I really, I think it was a good thing and I think it's benefited, uh, in some ways. And, uh, your reports to us even emphasize that more.
Right.
Uh, of what it's done. And when, when you guys let us know there was a need down there, we could probably come to your rescue. And like I say, we did what we could do and we gave you pretty much every penny of our alcohol money. We, we, we've set a limit of one thirty-five and I noticed, um, uh, we're trying to make that from alcohol money and I noticed this month, I've got numbers on the alcohol sales recording, uh, right here, my little cheat sheet. Five thousand four hundred ninety dollars and fifty-one cents, last month, six thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars sixty-six cents. Not on the wrong page, but it's supposed to be more like twelve thousand.
Is that on the target or has it fallen off during the...
Alcohol tax, fifty-two hundred seventy-one dollars and six cents. So, so for July, we're gonna have to make up about, uh, out of the treasury, we're gonna have to make up about seven thousand dollars to meet our goals. You can see that five thousand seven, uh, two hundred seventy-one dollars, uh, times twelve won't equal a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So when we say we're gonna do a gift of one thirty-five in schools, we don't even know if we're gonna take in that much. But we're willing to, uh, take a chance, that we will. So, I mean, that's why we need to know accountability, I guess, is what we're looking at today. Not that we doubt you guys.
No, we will work in the council, we will, we expect somebody to work in the council.
It benefits you if you need all the money. We don't really have any money to, to gift, but we're gonna do it anyway. You know? So you other guys, tell us what you wanna tell us now. We, we gonna, we gonna let you stand and talk. Norman, we may have some more redacts to you, okay? First of all, introduce yourself to us.
Yes, sir. My, I'm David Cantrell, uh, the new principal at the high school. I've been here for ten years, been working, well, eight years I've been the teacher at the high school. Uh, which is my, about thirty-fourth, thirty-fifth day on the job as the principal. I'm having a great time to do it. I'm really excited. But I, I married into a Hamilton family, I love Hamilton. I turned down the opportunity to go home last year because I wanted to stay and be an Aggie. And I want, you know, as a teacher, before I go any further, I want to thank you because for the last two years, I've been a teacher. Uh, and for the last two years, I have benefited. Not one time have I needed something and I went to my principal and asked, I need this for my classroom, I need this for my kids. I've not been told no. And in years past, there was a scenario where I was told no. Uh, two years ago, the beginning of the school year, you know, my computer just, it just, I mean, it almost caught fire, I mean, it was just terrible. And in years past, I would have been without a computer. Well, by that afternoon, I was able to have a computer because we just threw money there. So as a parent of, of two children that are still in the school system, thank you for the last two years. As a teacher, thank you for the last two years. That money has been incredibly beneficial for me. Uh, as a teacher, it allowed me not to ask my kids to buy anything for, for my classroom. Uh, it, it allowed me to be in a position where, you know, I believe in using note cards. And so I'm telling my kids to go out and buy note cards. I had a file cabinet full of note cards. I, I had a file cabinet full of pencils, cause you wouldn't believe that, you know, I'm tall seniors, they still bring pencils to life, okay? Uh, and instead of me telling them, hey, I need you to go buy these things, I just pulled it out of a drawer and gave it to them. And that money, those supplies that I, that came, a lot of that came directly from the city. Uh, so thank you for that. Like, uh, Coach Valip said, I guess the thing that I'm most excited about, and, and I wanna talk... and, and I want to talk to you a little bit about how the arts program has benefited our kids, okay? Uh, I come in and before I was waiting to film stairs, I saw some of our art from our students displayed downstairs. Um, and I want to tell you why that's important. Because the art program at Hamilton High School and Hamilton Middle School and Hamilton Elementary, elementary school gives students an opportunity to fit in somewhere otherwise they wouldn't have a place. Uh, we have a lot of kids at our school that are not athletes and they don't want to participate in sports. They're not musically inclined, they don't want to participate in bands. Uh, I had a senior last year, it's his thirteenth year school. I asked him, have you ever participated in any things? He said, no, sir. He was in the fire last year. And so when he, they had a performance and I could come in and I could talk to him about, hey, you did a great job, you know, you sounded wonderful. You know, he lit up and that was the first time in his educational life that he had that opportunity to belong to something, to be a part of something. And so my vision moving forward, you know, I'm at a disadvantage here. I can't really talk about from the principal side of the last two years. But my vision moving forward is, uh, to allocate fifty percent of what you guys give us every year to our arts program. Um, that grant that we have right now that's gonna sustain us this year, uh, is gonna run out. Uh, we got twenty thousand last year, we get ten thousand this year, next year we get five. And you can kinda see what's happening. It becomes up to us as the, as the school to offset what we're not getting. Um, we get ten thousand dollars this year. Just the personnel alone to have our program costs over ten thousand dollars. So right out of the gate, we're, we're in, we're in red. Um, so with your permission, I would love to be able to say right now, from this day forward, I'm guaranteeing you, we're gonna put fifty percent of it to our arts program because I think it's that important. I think it's, I mean, you know, I just think it gives our kids something else to do. Um, I believe we had kids that stayed and finished and graduated high school last year because they had something to be a part of. Uh, my own child, we discovered that he's a wonderful painter, that he can hear me wonderful through art at school. Uh, you know, that's a personal benefit. We have a student at the high school, and obviously I can't name names, um, that has struggled to find his place the entire time he's been at the high school and he's been involved in other areas. But when we did Oklahoma last year, we saw a whole nother person. I mean, a completely different kid when he stepped on that stage. And it was because of the art program that we had that. We're, we're gonna lose the art program if we don't have money to replace them. Because we just, it can't come out of our general fund. Uh, my, uh, we're deficit spending right now on the general fund at Hamilton High School. Uh, fingers crossed, praying that there's three things that keep me up at night right now. One is I'm praying to my faculty, you're older, don't, they're not affected by COVID. Two, I'm praying for my kids not be affected by COVID, those are students. Three, I'm praying for how am I gonna make up the lost revenue out of our general fund? We, our general fund is one hundred percent relied upon what we can fundraise and what we can sell. We get no monies from anywhere else. We just don't. Uh, and we do get textbook money, we get all those things that Coach Ballard talked about, we get that. But as far as janitorial supplies, there's no money for that. We have to fundraise that. Um, you know, if something tears up, uh, we've got to fix it out of the general fund. We haven't fixed lockers in three years. It's every day we're having to go out in the hall and try to break into a locker because they're not working right. Uh, we, we've gotta have those replaced and those lockers have been there since, might get out soon since the building was built. Uh, you know, general maintenance like that. And so that all comes out of our general fund. So we desperately need every, every penny we can get. We are not a money-making machine at Hamilton High School. So any help that you have given has been greatly appreciated and any help that you can continue to give will be greatly appreciated. And I promise you, I'm standing here before you, man of God, you know, I prom, I want, I want that money going to our kids. I want that money going to make Hamilton High School a better school. Uh, because I want us to be the best. I told my faculty in the first meeting, I, in my entire life, the thirty-nine years, I've had to fight for everything I've ever had to be the very best that I could be to get to where I'm at, all right? And I was, I've been a winner at everything I've done and we're gonna win at Hamilton High School. I mean, academically, athletically, everything we do, we're gonna win. But that does take a little help here and there. We, I want you, I want my kids, I want our community to know that we are the absolute very best school in this county. I don't mean in the county system, I mean in this county, all right? And I want us to be the best. I mean, a lot of times I told our teachers, we taught them we're the best, but we've got just a lot of work to do. Those monies that you're giving us, that goes a long way, uh, in helping us provide our students the opportunity to be successful. So I just want to thank you. I want to tell you, you know, I'm, I'm more than happy to work with you moving forward. You know, whatever we need to do to make it work, I'm willing to do that. Uh, I, I don't want the money for athletics. I know I've had a hundred questions in the last two or three weeks. I don't want the money for athletics. Athletics takes care of athletics. Uh, act, but there's nobody coming in and saying, I want to make a donation for the English for the program, okay? Just, nobody's coming in and said, I want to give, I've got, once you left, I have a special ed teacher here. Uh, nobody's coming to Hamilton High School and say, I'm gonna give a five hundred donation to the students of special needs. You know, athletics is taken care of, we're not worried about that. But we desperately need, um, we need any money we can get, uh, just to be brutally honest. Because I know we're a county school, but, uh, that doesn't mean we're getting all the county money, if that makes any sense. Where, that, that they get shared, uh, you get it based on our population, student population. Even though our city generates more than that tax revenue than any other city. Generates well over fifty percent, we get under fifty percent. So by you guys stepping up two years ago and helping us, that really helped us level the playing field uh, with some of our other schools that we're competing against. And I hope we will continue to do that. I hope, uh, you know, I just think it's a wonderful thing we can support our kids in this community and provide them with an opportunity to be the best that they can be. We have wonderful kids. I've taught some of your children, I've taught some of your grandkids, we have great kids in this, this community. And we can be great and if we can partner together, uh, I have no problem giving you guys all the credit for helping us there, you know? Um, I guess that's all. If you have any questions for me, I'll have to answer any question you have if I can. But now my knowledge base is a little bit limited.
Well, I think you're limited because you can't speak for Coach Dave and how he, how he spent the money. But let me ask you this, and you may, you may not know that, and this is irrelevant to this, but this is a question that a, a lot of, uh, parents of twenty-twenty seniors have.
Okay.
What happened with the fundraiser money from the senior trip?
Fundraising money, that is a, uh, that is a state rule, okay? State law. If you raise money through a fundraiser, we're, we're not allowed to return that money to the state. If we do that, it becomes investment at that point. None of us at the high school really want to go to jail.
So how, how was that money spent?
The money, the fundraiser money's still there, to the best of my knowledge. Um, I looked today, we still, we've still got, uh, money in the senior account. We're looking, not a lot. The, the problem with it is, is not, we haven't got a lot of it back. You know, for months, we've, nobody would even call us back from New York, from Washington. Uh, you know, we were going to Washington National, I can say all this because I'm the senior sponsor. We were going to Washington Nationals baseball game. We would have been the first baseball game of the year and they raised the banner and all that good stuff, we've been, uh, World Series champions. We, we don't have tickets back, ticket money back for that. Uh, Broadway play, we don't have any of that money back. They, they just say, when you, when we reopen and you can come. Well, it don't work that way with the senior trip. I can't call up the twenty-twenty class and say, okay, Broadway's good, let's go. Um, so a lot of the monies we didn't get back, the money that we did get back and was paid out of pocket, we've already returned um, to those, uh, students that paid money out of pocket. The fundraiser money, we've got it sitting in, uh, the senior class account. And we're waiting for direction on from the central office and what we can do for that. There's, there's some ideas out there, uh, some things we wanted to do, try to honor the class of twenty-twenty because they didn't miss out on so much, um, and so kind of that, that money's sitting there hopefully to be used, um, in some ways memorial to them. We can't do anything with it other than spend it on those kids, if that makes sense. You know, I mean, you, you know, it is for those kids and, uh, it's just incredibly unfortunate that everything happened. But the money's there, we're not using it, we're not spending it, we can't use it, we can't spend it. You know, it, it's not going to buy toilet paper, it's not going, all that has to come out of the general fund. Uh, and if we say that the county, we, you know, there's no shifting around and all that, it, it's still sitting there and, um...
Well, I appreciate you answering that. As a parent, that has been a question because it was stressed, you know, at the beginning. Your fundraiser money is raised for your child. If your child chooses not to go, it is non-transferable, it is for your child only. And, uh, so then when everything turned out like it did, you know, it was like, well, if it was for each individual child and it can't be, you know, used for anyone else or anything else, what, you know, what's happening with the money?
Yeah, well, right now it's sitting there because I don't think we really have an answer from, uh, our CFO at the central office. I don't know that we have an answer from the state and we can legally give her that money. And nobody wants to do anything right now or does nobody wants to go to jail. Um, because, you know, there's, there's two things actually. Money will get you in trouble quicker than anything else at the school, but if you're not doing anything, you know, you're something to throw for the money.
Well, I know, I appreciate you answering that and I know the people that, uh, are watching on forty-nine county, the, the twenty-twenty parents appreciate you that way and...
I listen, I love those kids and I was their, you know, senior class sponsor. And I wish I could write a check right now to their kid, I really do, and give them all the money that they worked for back. Uh, because selling the donuts is, is, selling donuts is pretty easy because everybody likes donuts. But some of those, you know, that's hard work they're going out and doing. And I, I really do, I wish we could, uh, but we're liable by the law to do what the law says. Fundraiser money, just, it cannot be returned. Um, you know, it's my hope we can work out a way that, uh, you know, you've got a son that's coming and if we're able to do a senior trip somewhere down the line, maybe some of that money that Eli had could go with him. But I don't know that, I can't tell you that.
I know, I know.
But, you know, that's, I wish, maybe, I'm hoping we can do some things like that. We start a scholarship in honor of those kids. And I know, I don't know, but, um, it is up for discussion. We've had a lot of conversations about it. But from where I'm standing, you know, a lot of those conversations we're having was out, a lot of the teachers, so it's, it's coming from a different view.
I just, I have a interest in the senior trip. My class was the first senior trip.
Yeah, I've heard that.
I'm a trip.
Right.
And to me, the situation this year, it's sort of put a bad taste in people's mouth regarding fundraising because of, of just how things turned out. And I mean, it was, it's, can't blame it on any, any learning. It's just, uh, it's just something that happened. But I, I hate to see the trip itself hurt.
Me too. I, listen, I, I would guarantee you from the last seven years, I've enjoyed going on that trip more than anybody else. And that includes a lot of the kids. Uh, I love that trip. But I, I was heartbroken when that, when we finally said we can't do it. You know, I'm, I'm now the principal and I'm sitting here thinking, am I gonna be able to take them this year? Well, I look at everything that's going on in a lot of the places that we go and think, I want to take my kid there. You know, I want to take your kid there, I want to take, you know? Exactly. That's what a lot of people say, you know? And so, um, I'm hopeful that sooner rather than later, we can make return more. Because it's a great opportunity. We've taken kids to Washington DC, we've taken kids to New York the past several years that will never, ever, ever have that opportunity again. Um, it's, it's a wonderful cultural experience we've been able to provide and I hope we can continue to do it. But twenty-twenty is certainly complicated in a, in a lot of, lot of different ways. If there's no other questions, thank you so much.
We'd all love to speak to you.
Thank you for words for last. Well, sir, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Keith Smith, I'm at, at Mary School. I've been there for just a little over a calendar year now. So I kinda, kinda came in the middle of, of money being received and all that kind of stuff, so, um... So I'll go ahead and answer some of the questions if you pass them. Yes, our, our teachers have an account and it's put directly into their account.
Did they get it at the first of the year, so you should get the trip back at the beginning?
At the end of the year. And, um, they're in O five and we were talking, actually, we were talking about this because we're having a Walmart day tomorrow. So it's a big day for the, um, for our teachers, they go to Walmart, spend, you know, all festival monies and those monies and that kind of stuff, kind of put it into their account. And I was like, no, I had that much money. And Mr. Baris said, well, Richard, even though, you know, when I put, I always tell you when we put all this in there, so anyways, um, they'll go spend a lot of money tomorrow. And, and maybe, that may be one of the issues that someone don't realize. The Walmart day is before school and then we get the money in September and just put in there and it may be around next year before they realize that they got that. I'm not sure, I don't know, I can't speak for them, but I do know that we do that. Um, and I can verify that and see what it proves that. Um, and then I've heard that some people say, well, we've got all this money left in, in our school account and all that kind of stuff. And we do have some. And I'm gonna be very honest with you, I'm a, a very tight spending, I don't spend money freely. Just to spend it on wasteful items or just, just because I have to spend it. I kind of be very prudent with, with money that I spend, um, make sure that it's filling a need. And, um, so, you know, from September to March the twelfth, I had spent, um, around half of what we had made. And I had not spent anymore until about two weeks ago, I ordered some TVs, some, some more TVs that we got to put in. And I've got some other technology needs that we're, we spending on. And I've actually, I had reduced our classroom supply list this year because I knew everything going on. People were out of work for a while, some people were just on hard times anyway. And so I was gonna use some of that money to go directly into classroom supplies. In fact, I had spent some of our other, other monies that had not been spent on classroom supplies directly for, for the kids. Uh, pencils, markers, uh, all of that kind of stuff. Um, so I've still got another work to get up to that. But, um, we ordered Chromebooks with it, we ordered, uh, Chromebook cords, um, those type of things. And so, and I had talked with, with the mayor back. I'm gonna say, was it January, I can't remember when it was, it might have been earlier than that.
It was that time period, yeah.
On the playground.
Yeah, the time period, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it, yeah, amazing things with the playground.
This is the never ending project, fair enough.
I gotta watch this man, he knows how to get donations. He's good at it. Teach those other two guys a few things, okay?
We've got, we've got some great piles of gravel out there and we're still waiting on that track. I mean, you know, it was gonna be done before school started last year. And here we are, it's still not done. And, um, so we're hoping that, been told that it's gonna be done before kids get there. Well, it's, uh, long now and we haven't seen any, so, so, I'm still waiting on that. We still got, um, that project, um, going on. And, um, I had reserved some to kind of finish, finishing touches out there. And so that's another reason I had kind of reserved some of my money back. I will say what they said, if, if I need to come up here monthly or quarterly and just sit down and talk with you guys about anything, more than happy to do that. I'd be in other places that, that's kind of what we, we lay out a plan by quarter. Because I have to talk, this is our plan for this quarter, what we're gonna do. I'd be happy to do that, kind of, which, you know, was going on because, yeah, doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it is a lot of money too. Um, and it's very, very well needed, very much appreciated. And as they both said, I can get to studying out, we didn't have our break for basically our typical May. That's quite a bit of operating expense money that's gone. And what's break gonna look like this year? Well, we're not. You know, our break room is about half. Well, it's about, if you just put a wall out there, that's, they can kind of walk through. And I just could not see, but everything like it is, I sit in five, six hundred kids through that area every day. Touching everything. I want to make that a little distance and that's so we're changing how we can break. Hope we still make money. I mean, we're gonna try to deliver things to them. And that's what we're doing. You get to wonder, you know, you gotta cut your options way back if you're gonna do that. Cutting our options way back. We hope we still make some money, right? But we might not, you know, we might have things that they want for us and it may be very difficult, difficult to do. But, um, that's kind of, um, that's kind of our financial status right now. And we're not, look, we've, and this was before me, obviously, but that's the, the bookkeeping and the finances of Hamilton. And we're not, look, we've, and this was before me, obviously, but that's the bookkeeping and the finances of Hamilton Elementary have been very prudent and taken care of. It's in pretty good shape. I'm not saying it's not, it is. But in times like these, if it won't take long for the funds to be completed and not be in good shape, so it is, and you know that from the senior standpoint. Things keep going, we're all gonna be, I'm prepared for anything, but it's the former, and I understand that. So they want you to know, whatever you've done in the past is greatly appreciated. In fact, except any thing that you didn't necessarily able to do for us in the future, whatever accountability that you apply for me, I'll be more than happy to provide that. And if that's a reduced amount, it's a reduced amount. If it's more, it's more. If it's the same, it's the same. Whatever it is, we appreciate it, and we should just thought consider that, so if you got any questions, we'll be more happy to answer as best I can.
I have a question about the field trip that I guess the fourth grade took.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I was approached by, apparently y'all asked for donations from businesses in town. Was this tax money ever considered to pay for that?
You know, I don't know that it was.
Because that is acceptable.
That would've been a great expense, yeah.
That would've been acceptable, and that would've been, I don't know if y'all...
Save me a hundred dollars, because I put...
Well, I mean, I don't know if y'all allowed every student to go, but that tax money, I mean, would have covered everybody. But obviously, somebody took up the slack. But I was approached by some of the businesses in town that said, why didn't I get the money? Didn't y'all give them money? Was it, you know, what's the...
I understand that, yeah.
And that's, you know, so...
That's a good thought. Because I did, you know, we being you, you don't kind of, I didn't know though, you know, I didn't have an ordinance in front of me. I'm gonna take the blame for not looking it up and trying to see what exactly I could and could not use it for, you know? And being you, you don't think about those things. But when they approached me, I said, well, it's gonna take a bit of fundraising to cover those lessons, those, those charter lessons down there. That's kind of expensive. I said, but, you know, they said, well, maybe we could sell a tissue. I said, sure, you could, but you might get some sponsors on a dick shirt. And, you know, I personally sponsored it myself as well, but I did not, to just perfectly honest, I did not think of that. That would've been used for it.
So I guess moving forward, we could look at using some of those monies for field trips, or especially maybe for our students that can't afford to go.
Right, right.
Senior trip's a whole nother handle.
Senior trip's something else, but you know, something like that, where the children, you know, where it's educational, and not saying that the senior trip isn't an educational experience, but the senior trip is completely different. It's a whole nother ballgame. But, you know, it, according to the ordinance, you can...
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, well, I did not think of that, honestly, but we did make sure every child that parent let them go.
And that's great, because it's always, you know, it's always sad when somebody wants to go and for whatever reasons the funds aren't available.
I'll take them personally when you gotta go, and I'll take them when I gotta go.
True.
There's that sometimes. Go ahead.
We really appreciate those reports today, and what we can see is good coming out of the funds that you guys have received from the city. And I'm just so glad that we were able to come to your rescue to some degree. We can't throw as much money at you as you could spend, but maybe it helps in some areas that you don't receive from others and other sources and...
Can I ask one question? So obviously, that's an improved expense that was not part of it, but we've got, sorry. At a arts school, a lot of, you don't have funding for things that might involve improving the appearance of the school. Those would be strictly from general fund, or if you got out there bushes and ask for folks for to help you do these things. And I don't know, you know, how often you guys get down through there, but some of our being seen and things like that. And I might ask you to do it right now, I'm just saying, just think about these things. Could this ever be something that might be something that we can do to help maybe, you know, some new sidewalks, or if there's a place I need a sidewalk? I really need, but it's not really educational, I get that. But it's something that I need for the safety of, you know, of movements of kids and making it easier for them to move instead of having to go around the world to do something. So I'm not saying I need to do it, but just think about those things. Are those things that may in the future might be something that would be possible? These guys' campuses are starting to look pretty good, you know, in our sector, and it's not, you know, we're trying to do some things, but just, anyways, I don't think that that is what y'all think about that.
Well, like safety, I guess would be, you know, is that a scenario where we have safety needs? We need to enhance our perimeter, we need to enhance our interior, safety, add cameras, things like that? Is that something we could come at a later date? If we have the need to discuss that, to see. I'm not saying it would, you know, that it would ever come to that, but I guess I'm just...
You guys, just always know, always know that you can get on the workshop, our work session agenda, just by request, Amy or Angela. We have a work session on Wednesdays prior to our Monday night, we'll have a Monday night meeting following this meeting. Before our first meeting will, of the month, which is on first Monday night generally, we'll have a work session prior to that on Wednesday. So our work sessions are on Wednesday. If you ever need to be on the agenda for any requests like that, just bring it to us, and we'll try to act on it for you. I mean, I think that we need to be flexible in some manner, in some manners that we could be helpful to you guys. As June says, why buy something because you're directed by it if you don't need it? If you need something else and you have a special need, let us know, for goodness sakes, and we'll, we'll try to act accordingly.
Never just spend money just...
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for being cooperative with you guys. I think you're honorable, and you'll do it the right way every time, so... But if you have a special request, bring it to us. And we're all ears, we'll listen, and then we'll give you an answer. If it's not in that ordinance, we'll address it.
And please feel free to call or to come by anytime you want to. You know, my office is always open, I would love to talk with you.
Since you guys have really made secure your schools, I kind of don't knock on your door many times unless I have a special need to be there. Because I know, I know you screen everybody that walks in that door now, and I think that's wonderful. I'm really proud that y'all have secured your buildings as best you can.
Thank you.
And it seems that the fights are in the street right now at all these cities, and maybe the school shootings and things are not on people's mind like they were. So I'm just thankful for that, you know? That became repetitive, over and over and over, innocent children being hurt. And I hope that's gone forever.
Me too.
But be secure, be safe. I don't know what to predict for you guys this year, I really don't. I think you're gonna have a very unusual year. I noticed where some school has nine hundred and fifty on their quarantine, teachers and students after trying to start up their school. So we hope you better luck than that, you know, in your endeavors to get started back. It's quite a challenge, as I can see.
It's going to be a real challenge, just to keep the school clean, the requirements to clean. You know, our teachers have to clean between every class period. We have to dissipate that, it's got to end up every day, we have to dissipate the entire school. It's going to be a challenge, but we're looking forward to making the best of it.
Yeah. Sorry we couldn't have everyone here, we got a forum today in our work session, but we had a couple, had other things that they couldn't be here for. So thank y'all today. Any other questions of these good principals today?
You didn't get me on camera this morning, though, without picking up a stack of beer cans somebody threw out. On the road out there, they just scattered them as splatter, then I just pull up the guy and pick them up. I said, that don't look too good from school.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate y'all very much. Good luck in your school years this year.
Thank you.
Go Aggies.
Go Aggies.
We didn't specifically book anything else for this workshop. It was, I knew these reports might take a while, and I appreciate y'all hearing all the comments today and your input also. If there's nothing else, we'll stand adjourned.